Our second public hearing is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the 2014-15 City Manager's Recommended Operating Budget for General Fund, Enterprise Funds, Internal Service Funds, and Special Revenue Funds, and also to adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriations limit, the GAN limit, of $34,720,090 for 2014-15. Questions of staff on this item?
Through the chair. I did notice that there was, within the staff report, that there were some answers to the questions from the study sessions, and I just wondered, is there going to be any more elaboration on that, or is there appropriate time to question, or to ask about that?
It looks like staff has a presentation to go through first, is that correct?
Staff actually does have a very short presentation. I can answer the question, though. In terms of specific answers to questions that were raised during the study sessions, it was not staff's intent to produce any additional detailed information, although there are a couple of topics that we believe warrant a further, more robust discussion, and we'll be asking the city council for your time and attention in a study session format. One particular topic is the code enforcement program generally. We think that's a topic that warrants your diving into it in a little bit more detail. We've made our proposals as it relates to your approval of the budget, but would like to talk further with you on some of the topics that were very briefly discussed at the study session.
At a future study session?
Correct.
And that was fine. I was pleasantly surprised to see that the director had provided some outline of the proposed program and everything, so.
Through the chair, just on that topic, then maybe the staff can go to the presentation on just that topic. I saw the quote "action plan," and I think that does need more detail. I think it's a start, and that's fine, but I think if this is approved and that position goes out, I still think a further study session, as you indicated, is most appropriate. I would still like to see more detail as to the action plan and how we take the current staffing complemented, if you have an additional staff member, and what the timeline, what the strategies will be, and where we can have some measured outcome. I know it's anticipated, according to the report, six to eight months or nine months, but what are we measuring to know that we've achieved something for the community? So I think that was one of the comments I was going to have, but since we're on that topic, I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for indulging me. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the 2014-15 City Manager's Recommended Operating Budget for the General Fund, Enterprise Funds, Internal Service Funds, and Special Revenue Funds was delivered to the city council on May 30th, 2014. Since that time, the city council held two public budget study sessions, covering a total of five hours of budget review. The city manager and department directors responded to city council questions during these study sessions. A total of five questions required more expansive response, and a written response is included in the agenda packet for those five questions. In addition, Vice Mayor Medina provided a very short list of questions and observations, and a written response has also been provided to the city council on those. There was a city council comment at the first study session expressing its interest in receiving a briefing on the history of the balances in the various reserve funds. That was more of a comment rather than a question, and I did want to point out that I think we have provided to you tonight a summary for five years of the history of the various reserve funds, so we provided that to you, and at any point in the future, if there's a question, would be glad to provide more information on that. Just very briefly, go through a couple of slides just to remind the council of some of the details of the budget for the purposes of public hearing tonight. For 2014-15, a balanced budget is being provided. In fact, there's a surplus. Revenues are estimated to exceed expenditures for 2014-15. Prior year's approaches to cost containment and the delivery of services continue to exist in the budget. In general, revenues are up 7%, which is a substantial growth from the prior year's budget, and expenditures are up a total of 7%, or 5%, and again, that leads to the surplus that I just described. Again, there are several supplemental requests that are recommended. These are for both ongoing personnel and one-time initiatives to address city priorities. Overall, operating revenues in the budget amount to $37,441,000, operating expenditures are $36,606,000, again, leaving an operating surplus of a little under $800,000. It is recommended that $394,000 of that total be earmarked for service enhancements, again, still leaving almost $400,000 of unspent surplus in the year. For the General Fund, a quick review of the funding sources. You see that total taxes amount to 69% of the revenue in the proposed budget, and departmental revenues that we discussed just a minute ago amount to about $5,170,000, which is 14% of the budget. Proposed expenditures proportionally by departments are really unchanged from prior years. Would just point out that Public Safety now accounts for 63% of the total General Fund expenditures, so Police and Fire amounts to 63% of General Fund expenditures. There are several enhancements, program enhancements, that are recommended, both in Personnel Services, there's reclassification, several Personnel reclassifications, and there are a small amount of non-Personnel Service enhancements. In the Personnel Service Enhancement area, calling for full-time additions to one police officer, one code enforcement officer, a parks maintenance worker, and one Recreation Services Coordinator would point out that the police officer position in general and the parks maintenance worker position in general, these are areas that had service reductions in recent years, and so those are two, two areas where there is additions. The budget, and again, discussion took place in the study sessions around the city's enterprise accounts, the water, wastewater, stormwater, and cable funds, and the presentation includes the revenue and expenditure proposals for those enterprise funds. The last slide, would just like to review, that's the GAN appropriation, and as the mayor indicated, there is a separate resolution tonight for the council to act as required in approving the GAN appropriation limit. Just point out again that the voters approved Proposition 4 and Proposition 111 many years ago, collectively referred to as the GAN initiatives, that places a limit on the amount of tax-generated revenue that an agency in California can receive and appropriate each year. This appropriation limit can be adjusted annually, reflecting cost of living and population growth adjustments. As part of the budget presentation, finance is calculated, again, the GAN appropriation limit, and as you can see, the appropriation limit for 2014-15 is at $34,720,000. That is the possible expenditure that the city could have from the proceeds of taxes, but we don't have that much. What we actually have appropriated is $24,383,000. So at this point, for 2014-15, our actual appropriations are $10,336,000 below the GAN limit that is established. With that, I'd be glad to answer any further questions the council has.
Okay. Any additional questions for staff? Michael?
Only because you brought it up, you emphasized the 63% for Public Safety. I was wondering, I know that number's been historically in that neighborhood, and I know a lot of cities have proportions in that area, but how does that really, how does that 63% compare to other cities, and is that a number that we need to keep an eye on, and is there some upper limit that we don't want to exceed?
Well, I'm sure I could anger my, some of my friends in uniform. Well, I can give you a historical perspective that, again, is immaterial in 2014, but I grew up believing that 50% was where it should be. And I think what has really driven the difference is really the PERS rates, the retirement rates, that has really had, because when I'm looking at 50%, these are back in the days when the PERS rates were 0% or 3% or something like that, but you throw in, you know, the current PERS rates, and that really, you know, changes the equation. You know, I think it's really just, you know, I don't know there's anything to keep an eye on, but it's, you know, I think it's more interesting than, more interesting than relevant, but, and I would only not speak for the manager, but I think, you know, I think what the council's always interest has always been, and I think what this council has demonstrated, is an interest in having balanced services for the community, that for, you know, for this city council, recreation services, library services, you know, non-public safety are very important, and, you know, I think that's the only relevance, but other than that, I think it's a footnote, but there's not much to be done with it. But again, I think the PERS rates is what's really driven it up in the last seven or eight years.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak to the council on these two items? Just tell us your name and your street, please. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and honorable mayor. My name is Clarice Veloso. I am the Development Director for Hip Housing. I am here today on behalf of my organization to thank the city for its ongoing support of our organization, especially when housing demand could not be any higher. The county of San Mateo cites that the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in the county is now almost $2,200 a month, putting it out of reach for most teachers, home health aid workers, bank tellers, and so many hard-working people in this county. Minimum wage earners would have to work 200 hours per week to afford this rent. Tied with San Francisco, this puts San Mateo County as the most expensive county in the country. In the city of San Bruno, Hip Housing has served 112 people through our home-sharing program. We matched 12 residents in home-sharing this year and maintained housemate matches for an additional 18 residents. Aside from matching our clients in home-sharing, we provide financial literacy workshops. We partner with other organizations like Star Vista to help house emancipated foster youth, and we do in-service trainings with organizations that runs shelters like Envision Shelter Network. One of the more notable matches that we've made this year was an emancipated foster youth with a senior in the city of San Bruno. The foster youth, her name is Ann, is in her early twenties. She works full-time, and she goes to school in the evening, and she receives a rent stipend from Star Vista. We matched her with a longtime San Bruno resident, May, a senior who really needed help paying her bills. So May lives on a fixed income on her own and still maintains some mortgage and other expenses. Thanks to the match, both Ann and May have found affordable housing. So thank you again to the city for your continued support.
Thank you, Clarice. Anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marty Medina. I live on Garden Avenue. I first want to apologize for not making it to any of the study sessions. It was kind of a hard time to get there, but I have a few comments. First, it's great to hear there is a budget surplus this year. I know it's been a long time coming, and I know there's a lot of hard work in getting that done. The addition of another police officer is wonderful news. However, I was hoping there would be some additional funding or discussion regarding the means to provide a San Bruno-wide emergency notification system. If more residents are informed in a timely manner regarding a crime that had just occurred in their neighborhood, you have more eyes that could be on and helping to catch the crook. The technology is readily available. In fact, you can do it by Twitter, you could do it by an email blast, it could be all voluntary. Those that want the notifications can receive the notifications. If you don't want it, fine. San Mateo County actually has a community alert system. I don't know if anybody here does receive the texts or emails. So there's, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we can use an existing kind of standard. I also commend the addition of another code enforcement officer. I know there has been additional interest and frustration expressed on San Bruno Patch regarding unkept and vacant properties around our city, and as you all know, Lee's Buffet has been sitting there for years, and I've heard from Mr. Rieckel that it's going to get demolished, so that's great. Also, I believe the council was aware of a vacant property boarded up at 324 Florida Avenue. It has been in the same dilapidated condition with various code enforcement violations since I moved here into the neighborhood in 2002. I heard a rumor their city was going to buy it, and if so, it would be a great place for a kiddie park. It's a real interesting lot, and it'd be a great help for our community. Speaking of kiddie parks, I was hoping something could be done to improve the access to the mini-viewing park downtown. It's roped off, it has a fountain in the middle, but with that $700,000 surplus, thinking that if you could put in some money to add a little jungle gym, a kiddie park fits perfectly with our downtown kiddie theme, because there are numerous children-themed businesses downtown. And speaking of downtown, I see that there is additional funding for maintaining the medians throughout the city, so why can't we take some of that funding to improve the appearance of our planters downtown? I understand the Beautification Task Force has been trying to get volunteers of the businesses to maintain those planters, but it's really something that the city should do, and it's really not that expensive. If we're going to maintain the medians, then our downtown is like a signature place for everybody, that it should look probably the best, other than a median. Lastly, the Bay Area is one of the leading local economies, and we are experiencing huge increases in property values. With that in mind, remember, the city owns a vacant property on Catalpa Way that has been vacant for at least 12 years. I believe it was being used for storage at some time, but the city should seriously consider selling this property during the current upswing in housing prices. According to Zillow, the houses in that area are worth in excess of $600,000 to $700,000. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? If we close the public hearing, you'd be precluded from talking on this item. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Some move?
Second.
Motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just a couple of quick items regarding Mr. Medina. I do believe maybe the chief can reinforce this. We do belong to the, we're in part of the CAN system, is that correct? Community Alert Network, so we do participate in that, and it has been used in the past. Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to know that Lee's Buffet will be coming down shortly. Florida Avenue, we will take a look at that, and Catalpa, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there a PG&E facility underground there that precludes us from building? Am I on the right lot there?
The PG&E facilities, and specifically, the 30-inch National Gas Pipeline runs next door to the Catalpa Building under a currently vacant lot, part of it which is improved, and I reuse that term loosely, as a mini-basketball court. So it's fair to say that those facilities are very close by, but not directly underneath, is my understanding.
Okay. We'll take a look at them. Thank you. Any additional comments or action by the council on these two items? We have two resolutions.
Through the chair.
Rico?
A few things. And I'm sure you were talking about that, Mr. Medina, so, Mr. Medina, good to see you. What I was also going to say, at one of the study sessions, there was a presentation from the chief in regards to the technology as far as people being able to go online to see what's going on in their community, in their neighborhood specifically, and it was something that is being rolled out. Eric Jackson could probably give you a very good detailed report on that, but I think you'll be impressed with what's coming out. And actually, at the Community Preparedness Committee that I was at this month in June, that was one of the topics of discussion that we had in regards to the alert system, and with me being on OES, so we were working on that. So just wanted to let you know that some of the stuff is already in the pipeline. As far as the budget is concerned specifically, I do know that staff, and I acknowledge this at the last time, goes through a lot of detail, goes through, as I do, and Mr. Larry was kind to say my short, it's 10 pages of questions and answers that I have submitted and received back. I know it seems, so you obviously know I read it too, but it's only because I think the duty of us up here is to go and ask the questions. They may seem over-analytical on my part, but I think it's important that I be able to look out and go to a resident and say, I've done my due diligence, I've looked through the budget, I care about how their money is being spent, as it is mine, but my responsibility is to oversee this. I do have some concerns when it comes, again, to the Recreation Center Coordinator's positions at the Recreation Department specifically. Code enforcement officer, we already talked about the addition, but I think as we get into that and it's advertised and before it becomes finalized with whomever is appointed, that we come back with a more, shall we say, a plan, an action plan. There are some very good things, of course, in the parks, something added there, it was just brought up about police, and some, shall we say, parking or traffic enforcement, which is sought after by our community, recreation, of course, so we, and a code enforcement we just mentioned. So there are some very positives. I want to make sure that we are being as conservative when we're asking for what revenues we see coming down the pike, because I think I want us, I'd rather us have surpluses than find ourselves three-fourths of the year through the budget and trying to figure out how we're going to cut. I also have, I think we should still be concerned, we talked about PERS, but the liabilities that the city has. I think that still needs to be a topic of discussion. The city manager mentioned about other topics that will be coming back with more detailed answer. I don't think that it wouldn't hurt us to have another discussion at some point as far as how we're looking and how we're going in some of the topics that we've brought up. I'd like to see how things are going when we make these staff changes and we're reshuffling things at some points, to come back more than midway through to say, these are good things, and they're having some positive results for our community. So I want to thank staff for their time that they spent in my questions and taking the job serious and going through each line, you helping Jim out through the whole process, thank you. So I think there's some good at this budget, I think there's some positive for the community, and so again, I wanted to thank staff for their effort in getting the budget out on time and giving us adequate time to review it.
Good. Anyone else?
Through the chair. Just briefly, made my comments at the study session, but I'm not as detailed at looking at all the numbers and everything, but what I'm most proud about is, and want to thank staff and my colleagues, is what we've done in the last 10 years to put us in this position. We've weathered the storm. I think the city manager says it very clearly, that all indications are that we are, we're out of the recession, but we're still cautious. Many things are still, as much as we'd like to, you know, recapture a lot of things that we've had to take hold off on or drop in the past, in the past 10 years during the downswing, we can't bring back right away, but we are bringing things back, and we're well-positioned. I like, the big, the three big things I'm most proud about is that we've started to make good with our employees, so we've taken care of employee salaries. Number two is that, you know, we do have some enhancements, and that, you know, a lot of the programs are being tweaked, they're being improved, and, you know, we're adding some staff. And one thing that, you know, that I think gets lost is that we have maximized our reserves, and so that rainy day is not, is not a big fear anymore, and so we've set up, through these last few years of recovery, and been able to, you know, capitalize and put enough money away, so that we feel, you know, positioned and safer for when it happens again, and it will happen again. So I'm in favor of this budget, and I want to thank staff for all their hard work throughout the year, not just the last six weeks. Thank you.
Through the chair, I forgot one thing, you just triggered it. I had brought this up before in about part-time temporary staff, that to have this reviewed, and my thought was that, or expectation was it was going to be reviewed at this budget. We obviously, as Councilmember Ibera pointed out, city employees who have gone through furloughs and who have not had raises, that has obviously changed for the positive, but I think also our part-time temporary staff that do a lot of the things from keeping this building going, and those are at the rec center, and those that are out in the fields and in the programs, that should be looked at as well and brought back to the council for review and consideration.
Okay. Anyone else? Irene?
Thank you. Before I compliment staff as well, I'd like to clear up a couple of misconceptions that Mr. Medina brought up. He referenced that our surplus was $700-plus thousand. I think he looked at the number before, he looked at the enhancements that we added to that, including the new police officer, the code enforcement officer and those things. Once you subtract those new costs, you're down to $395,000. There's an action later in this that we might have to increase costs for fire, which is another $239,000, which brings our surplus down to $159,000. So while I wish it was the $700,000, it's really not, so that, I just want to bring that part up. Also, I appreciate you bringing up the Beautification Task Force and their Adopt a Planter Program. We really are doing it not just to alleviate staff's time and efforts on all those little tiny pots that are up and down San Mateo Avenue. The more you involve people in their surroundings, the more you get them to participate in what's around there, the more pride they have in that, and we're, all we're asking the businesses to do is, you know, pull out the dead flowers and top, you know, cut off the, things like the, pull out any garbage that's in those things, in the planters. They come with a certain pride to do that, and so that's part of why we have that program. Plus, we put a little sign up there that says, adopted by whatever the business is, and I have a special pride with that as well. So that's why we did that. I also would like to point out and thank staff for all their hard work, and I'd like to point out to everyone that the enhancements, the new people that we've hired, each position benefits the residents and the visitors to San Bruno directly, none of its management that people, you know, people always say, oh, we spend too much on management or whatever. These are people in the streets who are helping and doing good things for the cities. Besides all those things, I'd like to bring up one thing that I neglected to bring up at the study session. It was referenced in the budget document on page F34, and it talks about grants to replace trash containers on San Mateo Avenue, and even though the Beautification Task Force gets people to paint those once a year during Operation Clean Sweep, some of the trash containers are really in bad shape. And with that, the parking that is behind on the, what is that, the east side of the San Mateo Avenue, particularly the public parking, needs, I believe, needs to be looked at with the trash containers there, the parking striping, and taken as a holistic view. So I'd like us to So I'd like us to think about putting, how we're going to blend all those things together with the Transportation Corridor Plan. So I don't know if that needs staff to amend the budget per se, or just add it to what we're doing with transportation, or if I have three votes to, to do that, I would like that to be added to what we're looking at.
Just a very quick response. The item of the trash receptacles is identified in the budget. I believe that staff is anticipating the availability of grant resources, but certainly, should that not materialize, we would return to further discussion with the Council. On the issue of the overall appearance and aesthetic of the parking lots in the downtown, that is an, an item that is not immediately contained in any of the initiatives that are funded through the, through this budget, so if it is something of interest to the City Council, we would certainly return to you with some thoughts about how that could be done.
Michael? All right. I think we do need to have you bring something back to us on those pretty bad. Okay. We have two resolutions for adoption. The first one is to approve the 2014-15 City Manager's Recommended Operating Budget for General Fund, Enterprise Funds, Internal Service Funds, and Special Revenue Funds. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Second is adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriations limit, the GAN limit of thirty-four million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, ninety dollars for 2014-15. Would someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.